I'd like to call the order of the meeting of the Village Board for August 25th, 2020. Please join us for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Village Clerk, would you please call the roll?
President DiSimone?
Here.
Trustee Carmona?
Here.
Trustee Fry?
You're muted.
You're muted.
Evan, can you unmute him?
Yeah, I can do that. I'm having a hard time unmuting here.
Bottom left-hand corner.
Ree, try to unmute yourself, bottom left. Did she raise her hand for here?
Yeah, we'll continue with the roll and we'll have...
She's unmuted now.
Right.
Okay.
Perfect.
Thank you.
Trustee Lomax?
Here.
Trustee Panacola?
Here.
Trustee Perez?
Here.
Friends of the session, at six we have a forum. Also in attendance was Village Clerk Nancy Quinn, Village Manager Evan Summers, and Village Attorney Joseph Concanon.
At this time, we'll move to public comment. Does anyone wish to address the board? If so, please approach the podium and state your name.
We have several this evening. The first one we have is an online submission from Michelle Icorn. I will go ahead and read that. "August 25th, 2020 Statement from Michelle Icorn on Third Avenue. This statement is to convey that we do not support the way the Village of Bensonville is pursuing the White Pines water main replacement project. Here are some reasons why. In a recent communication from the Illinois Environmental Protection Agency to the Village of Bensonville dated May 27, 2020, it appears that false information was provided to the agency for review in determining whether or not they would approve the Village of Bensonville's plan to replace water mains in the White Pines subdivisions. Specifically, a blue population that was used in the plan for approval by the IPA appears to have said that we have 19,250 people in White Pines. This number is grossly inflated. In fact, there are 5% more than 100 in White Pines. There are under 270 homes in White Pines. When determining whether the $33,000 plus was affordable for each of the homeowners of White Pines, metrics were used that misrepresented the median income for our area. The median income for White Pines was inflated by at least 25%. These are two important variables that are considered when determining the affordability of the project, but they were grossly misrepresented, which may have caused the IPA to approve a project under false pretenses. In addition, 60% of our pipes have already been replaced. These pipes should not be included in the cost per repair. Some of the pipes that the Village of Bensonville proposed for repair, they say probably have lead. However, based on the study that was done on or around 2018 to look for lead in our pipes, 100% of the homes are under the IPA allowance for lead. They do not need to be replaced. The cost for this project not only shows, not only should be much lower, but it should also be partially covered by funds that should still be in the Unperpetrated Utility Fund and other places in the budget. These are the funds that White Pines residents have contributed over and above our water usage and over what Village residents pay and were to be used for repairs such as repairs to the water mains at White Pines. These funds were collected from White Pines residents for over 50 years and have been used for other village operational issues unrelated to White Pines. Some of the services that are being paid for and charged to White Pines homeowners and services that are replicated and wasting valuable funds that can be used to cover repairs. For example, $700,000 is being allocated for engineering work to be done by Civil Tech Engineering. This work was already done by Edwork Engineering and we already paid for it. There may be other funds that have been wasted and mishandled as well. These are just a few of the reasons why we do not support the way this project is being handled. Every human being has the right to clean and afford the water. placing a $9 million price tag over and above our water usage costs on the backs of residents in 270 homes is wrong in so many ways. The Village of Bensonville should do their due diligence in finding a cost-effective way to repair the water mains that need to be replaced and repaired. It is their responsibility to do so. This is not, this is, there has to be some way that we can work together on a solution that is fair and does not take advantage of the community members who live in White Pines, a community largely, a community of largely senior citizens, using strong, long tactics and creating fear of only the broader community even more. Please reconsider the way you are approaching this project. The next public comment we have is from Paul DeMichael.
Public comment will be limited to three minutes. It's a total limit of 30 minutes.
My name is Paul DeMichael. I'm going to remove this mask while I talk because the microphone isn't going to give me COVID. This meeting kind of surprised me. I went to the July meeting and it was nice to see the trustees out here. This meeting tonight reminds me of the meeting when Eddie Lempert took over Sears Roebuck &amp; Company. The annual meeting, the shareholders were let into a room and then there was a big TV screen and Eddie Lempert was in the other room coming over closed-circuit TV. That tells me a lot about his character in that he didn't want to face the shareholders because he knew what was going to happen. My comments tonight are, I was pleasantly surprised to see that you did award the bid to the lowest bidder. It made sense and it was a good bid. What I was stunned was $627,000 to Civil Tech. I cannot understand what that's for, so I've applied to Corey's through Afoia to do a little research and find out what's involved. That's going to need some explanation.
Next, we have Anastasia Kay in regards to concrete extended and poured.
Good evening.
I ask everyone to speak up a little bit on the mic just because of how we got this set up. So, a little bit, I know it's a little bit uncomfortable, but speak up a little bit. Thank you.
My name is Anastasia Seamus-Catsus and I acquired this property less than, actually it's been a year and a half to be exact, almost. And when I first came to Bensonville, I really enjoyed the small-town feel it offers right next to a major city. I was looking forward to bringing my two daughters here to live here comfortably with me and my husband. Took a little convincing from my husband, but I got him on board. And when he looked at the house, he just about fell over because it was in shambles. There was water up to my mid-thigh and I'm 5'8". So, I hired a structural engineer who came up with a plan to waterproof and prevent water, further water damage. I did everything to the best of my ability that Bensonville would allow me to do. From ground up, I put in a drainage system and I had a concrete guy tell me that if I did what I was, what's currently there, which is an extended driveway, it would be a smart decision to do because it would also allow for my two teenage daughters to continue their college education, which one of them drives to Elmhurst Hospital every day. She does hospice care there. And I'm just wondering, where should she park when she comes home at 11:30 at night? Because she doesn't get the top of the pick when it comes to her schedule because she's at the bottom of the, of that pool. So, when she comes home at 11:30 or sometimes 2:00 in the morning because somebody called off and she has to cover, where should she park? Because there's four of us that drive. We're all young adults or adults. So, if you could give me an idea of where we can park our cars, even my neighbor parks on my side of the house because I'm currently not in it current, because I'm still trying to figure this situation out before I uproot my entire family into this house. It's definitely a hardship to live in this house. If I remove this, there will be nowhere to park. Grandparents can't come and visit. I can't even fathom the thought of removing this because the water is just going to ambush this house.
30 seconds.
So, I'm begging you to please let me live in this house. And the only way I can do that is if I continue to live in it the way it is. I updated everything from windows, drainage systems, you name it, I did it. So, hopefully you find it. It's something that needs to be done so it could be livable. Otherwise, there's no living in this house. And Bensonville might as well just buy it back from me.
That's three minutes. Thank you for your comment.
Uh huh. Thank you.
Next, we have James Cook in regards to water.
Ladies and gentlemen of the board, I decline my comments because it's just a duplication of what's been said before.
Mr. Cook declines his comments as he says a duplication of what's been said before.
Next, we have Gina Melathan in regards to White Pines.
Good evening. Do you want the address? Gina Melathan, 4N150 Pine Grove, Bensonville. I'm here this evening to talk about the water. Basically, what I'm here about is, I think everybody's tired of hearing me. I'm tired of saying it. And I think I want a forensic audit of the funding and now the engineering. I think that's what I've been saying for the last five years. And, you know, we had kind of agreed on it and I kind of think that's where we're at. And that's basically what I was asking for. And it was said that we were going to do that in court and that's what I'm asking for. So, if we could get a forensic audit on both the engineering and the funding, I'd be happy. And then one of us would go away happy. That's it.
Next, we have Dimitri Mathev in regards to grass cutting on his empty lot.
Sir, can you please be sure to cover your nose? Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Dimitri Mathev. That's my explanation about, I have a lot from year 2004-01.
You can speak up a little bit. The board could hear you. Thank you.
That's, I own that lot at address 401 South Minor Street from year 2000, which has been 20 years. That's mean I know how to maintain this lot. I received the invoice that City cut the grass 175. It's okay. But they accused me that the grass was 20 inches. That's how I remember like a date, April 22nd, my son cut the grass because the next day, 23rd, he flew to Bulgaria. From that period, from 23rd of April to probably the, they cut the grass on July 7th. If the notice, I don't know notice, what is the date, but probably one week, we have 69 days. According to statistic, how the, how fast goes the grass grow in the day, we have 2 to 6 inches a month, which is mean for that time, we can go probably 13.8 inches. And that time, I cut the grass two times in contractor one. Between first when I cut and contractor second, I was the third one. I remember it was around July 4th. They don't show me anything like a 20 inches grass. I don't have evidence about that. I just have a picture from Google that show the grass was cut. That's it. That's everything. If you want, I make a little bit more explanation right here. I can deposit...
You want to give that to the village clerk? We'll make it part of the record. Thank you.
Last, we have Gary Gardner in regards to water system.
Hello, my name is Gary Gardner, 17W 131 Woodland Avenue. Much of what I was going to say has already been covered, but I'll just recap a little bit here. For over 50 years, the Village of Bensonville has been collecting a water surcharge from the White Pines area on a system that they did not install or own. For over 30 years, the surcharge was to be put into a fund exclusively for the systematic replacement of aging, of the aging water system. For the past 20 years, only Band-Aids have been put on our system. 20 years ago, the money in that fund, along with the $1.7 million grant that Gina Melathan successfully lobbied for, was more than enough to complete the project that started 10 years earlier. We have abandoned valves and valves that have been, not been exercised for 20 years. It is absolutely shameless of the Village of Bensonville to misappropriate the millions of dollars that should have been used on this system. And it would have been more than enough to complete the project as planned. And then absolutely shameless to stick us with a $7 million bill for it. And it appears the Village of Bensonville has once again lied on their IPE loan application. Does anyone in this village have any scruples? Thank you.
Thank you.
That concludes public comment.
Hey Evan, can you hear me? I took the microphone out of my ears. Is it better?
Not better. Maybe worse.
Worse? Alright, because I couldn't, I couldn't hear. So, I, hold on.
The mic's definitely working. You may, we may have to upgrade our mics and headphones.
Can you hear me again?
About the same.
Okay. Okay. So, this concludes public comment. Is there a motion to approve the minutes from July 14th, 2020 Village Board meeting?
You have a motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
Are there any modifications to the minutes? Please call the roll.
Trustee Carmona?
Yes.
Trustee Fry?
Yes.
Trustee Lomax?
Yes.
Trustee Panacola? Trustee Panacola?
I'm not hearing you.
It doesn't look like he's muted.
Maybe unplug the headphones and just go off your computer unfortunately.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, yes.
Right.
Yes.
That's five. Motion carries.
The motion, uh, the motion carries in the minutes approved. The next item of business is to approve the warrant in the amount of $3,773,360.67. Is there a motion to approve the warrant?
Still moved.
There is a second.
Second.
Any discussion on the warrant? Please call the roll.
Trustee Carmona?
Yes.
Trustee Fry?
Yes.
Trustee Lomax?
Yes.
Trustee Panacola?
Yes.
Trustee Perez?
Yes.
The motion carries and the warrant is approved. There are no items on the consent agenda. Under Administration Ordinance of the Village of Bensonville, DuPage and Cook County, Illinois approving a consulting and service agreement with S&amp;G Thorpe Consulting Corporation, is there a motion to approve this ordinance?
You have a motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
There being a motion and a second, is there any discussion?
Yes, thank you, Your Honor. This is our special events contract for the village. We had previously canceled it at the beginning, beginning of the pandemic. I think we all recognize that we can't stay in our houses forever and we need to come up with some creative programming. So, we modified this contract with Mr. Thorson to be creative on the edges, but also try to return to some of the normalcy that we're looking for in special events.
Any other questions from the board? Please call the roll.
Trustee Carmona?
Yes.
Trustee Fry?
Yes.
Trustee Lomax?
Yes.
Trustee Panacola?
Yes.
Perez?
Yes.
That's five.
The motion carries and ordinance is passed. Number two is an ordinance of the Village of Bensonville, DuPage and Cook County, Illinois, amending Chapter 7 of Title IV of the Bensonville Village Code to affirm a policy of fair housing and prohibit discriminatory acts in the sale and rental of dwelling units. Is there a motion to approve the ordinance?
You have a motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
There being a motion and a second, any discussion?
Thank you, Your Honor. So, our village attorneys flagged this one. We need to update our fair housing policy in the village on a regular basis. It's been neglected for some time. So, this is an update to be in compliance with both federal and state law on fair housing.
Any other questions from the board? Please call the roll.
Trustee Carmona?
Yes.
Trustee Fry?
Yes.
Trustee Lomax?
Yes.
Trustee Panacola?
Yes.
Yes.
That's five.
Motion carries and ordinance is passed. Number three is a resolution approving the DuPage County Resolution FI-R-0418-20, allocation of $43 million from the DuPage County Coronavirus Relief Fund to the local government municipality COVID-19 reimbursement program. Is there a motion to approve the resolution?
You have a motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
There being a motion and a second, any discussion?
So, as part of the CARES Act funding from the federal government, DuPage County received $161 million for coronavirus relief because they are a municipality over 500,000 people. So, that $161 million, much of it's going to aid the Health Department. The county is holding on to a lot of it for their necessities. But, DuPage Mayor's and Manager's Conference was able to successfully lobby for a per capita distribution to municipalities of $51.84. So, each DuPage community will get that. I will say that's much higher than some of our neighbors in Kane and Cook County on a per capita basis. So, we're very happy about that. The title for this item is a little misleading. The Village of Bensonville is not getting $43 million. We'll be getting $953,000. So, that's our population times 51.84. This has to be spent on coronavirus relief. It cannot be used for revenue replacement and it must be used on expenses directly related to the coronavirus response. We need to expend this money and provide documentation to the county by December 30th of 2020.
Any other questions from the board? Please call the roll.
Trustee Carmona?
Yes.
Trustee Fry?
Yes.
Trustee Lomax?
Yes.
Trustee Panacola?
Yes.
Trustee Perez?
Yes.
That's five.
The motion carries and the resolution is approved. Number four is a resolution granting the advice and consent of the Village President's reappointment of Ray King to the Community Development Commission. Is there a motion to approve the resolution?
You have a motion.
Do I have a second?
You have a second.
There being a motion and a second, any discussion?
This is just a reappointment of Mr. King. He's done a diligent job in the CDC, so this will be reappointing him.
Any questions from the board? Please call the roll.
Trustee Carmona?
Yes.
Trustee Fry?
Yes.
Trustee Lomax?
Yes.
Trustee Panacola?
Yes.
Trustee Perez?
Yes.
That's five.
Motion carries and the resolution is approved. Number five is a resolution granting the advice and consent of the Village President's reappointment of Robert Maduro to the Bensonville Fire Protection District Number Two Board. Is there a motion to approve the resolution?
You have a motion.
Do I have a second?
You have a second.
There being a motion and a second, is there any discussion?
And the reappointment of Mr. Maduro has been doing a good job on the Fire Protection District Number Two.
Any questions from the board? Please call the roll.
Trustee Carmona?
Yes.
Trustee Fry?
Yes.
Trustee Lomax?
Yes.
Trustee Panacola?
Yes.
Trustee Perez?
Yes.
The motion carries and the resolution is approved. Moving on to community and economic development, number one is an ordinance denying variation for maximum impervious lot coverage, maximum driveway width, and paved parking area standards at 615 West Green Street. Is there a motion to approve the ordinance?
You have a motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
There being a motion and a second, is there any discussion?
We're waiting for Mr. Veiger to connect here to audio, so if you give us one second, please. Scott, looks like you're with us. Are you there? You're muted?
Yep, I'm here.
Alright, so we are on your first agenda item for CED regarding the Green and Church address.
Yeah, this is 615. We heard from the property owner a little earlier in this meeting tonight, Mr. Mayor, members of the board. As background, on April 21st of this year, the village issued a stop-work order on the house for extensive work without a permit. Work did not cease after that stop-work order. And so then that brings us to tonight. They have three variations that the property as constructed requires increase in impervious coverage over the 50% maximum, a three-foot wide driveway, wider driveway, 13 feet minus versus 10 feet is maximum width, and then the location of the accessory parking spaces that she built without permits. You'll notice in your staff report that engineering has numerous concerns about not only the structural issues, but stormwater as well. Staff recommends denial of all three of these variation requests. On the 4th of August, the CDC held a public hearing and it was unanimous 4-0 to not support this request. So, that's the item before you tonight is a denial of these three variations for 615 West Green Street.
Any questions from the board? Please call the roll.
Trustee Carmona?
Yes.
Trustee Fry?
Yes.
Trustee Lomax?
Yes.
Trustee Panacola?
Yes.
Trustee Perez?
Yes.
That's five.
Motion carries and the ordinance is passed. Number two is an ordinance approving a variation to allow fence in the front yard at 620 West Grove Avenue. Is there a motion to approve the ordinance?
You have a motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
There being a motion and a second, any discussion, Scott?
This is, Mr. Mayor, this is Southeast Corner Grove and Church Street, Church Road, pardon me. It is a variation to have a six-foot fence in the quote-unquote "front yard", which is actually the side of the home where the private bedrooms and so forth are. That's the request by this homeowner is to have a privacy fence along the heavily trafficked church road. That's a six-foot PVC fence in, of course, the corner side yard or front yard where no fence is normally required. A little bit different, you'll see in your packet, this fence does not extend further west towards Church Road than the abutting house does. So, that's, that's a big issue here. So, staff did recommend approval of this as the CDC did on its August 4th meeting. There are the two conditions. Engineering wants to make sure the drainage does not adversely, pardon me, affected. And then as our standard practice, five-foot solid fence with one foot of lattice work on the top for security and vision purposes for law enforcement. So, we recommend approval of this variation.
Any questions from the board? Please call the roll.
Trustee Carmona?
Yes.
Trustee Fry?
Yes.
Trustee Lomax?
Yes.
Trustee Panacola?
Yeah.
Yes.
That's five.
Motion carries and the ordinance is passed. Number three is a resolution approving a letter of intent of the sale of property at 840 East Green Street. Is there a motion to approve the resolution?
You have a motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
There being a motion and a second, any discussion?
Scott, you want to take this one? Yes, sir. That's fine. This is the Aaron Equipment Property. Some old-timers may refer to it as a Griffin Wheel Property on the south side of Green Street, a little bit east of Victory Auto Records in that area. It was acquired in 2017 by the Tollway Authority. It's now been declared surplus by the Tollway Authority, so they can dispose of that property. This is a letter of intent. I'll get to the Tollway in a moment. This is a letter of intent between the Village of Bensonville and Prologis, the industrial developers, to negotiate a contract for the sale of the property, to see a site plan and to give them time to do due diligence. The village will, will actually acquire this property on paper from the Tollway and then convey it to Prologis. The proceeds of the sale to Prologis will be turned over to the Tollway. What this does is gives the village a seat at the table in the discussions rather than just having the Tollway sell it straight out to Prologis. So, this gives us, for lack of a better... So, um, this gives us a, for lack of a better word, takes it off the open market so that the village and Prologis and the Tollway can negotiate a purchase and sale agreement.
Prologis is still working on the exact site plan, but given the size and what Prologis does, Prologis is the largest real estate, industrial real estate investment trust in the world.
Any other, any other questions from the board? Please call the roll.
Trustee Carmona?
Yes.
Trustee Frye?
Yes.
Trustee Lomax?
Yes.
Trustee Panacola?
Yes.
Trustee Perez?
Yes.
That's five.
Motion carries and the resolution is approved. Number four is a, uh, presentation of a proposed mixed-use redevelopment of one oh one West Main Street and the adjacent, uh, properties. Evan, you wanna take this over?
Yeah, so we were gonna have a presentation from the developer on this, just to give us a status of what the vision is. Uh, that presentation wasn't ready by the time, uh, this meeting occurred, so we're gonna hopefully re-tackle this one at a future September board meeting. So we'll just, uh, no action with this. This is just an informational item, so we can move on to the next one.
Okay, under finance, number one is the ordinance of the village of Benserville, DuPage, and Cook County, Illinois amending chapter seven of title eight of the Benserville Village Code regarding collection of and liability for water and sewer charges. Is there a motion to approve the ordinance?
You have a motion.
Do I have a second?
You have a second.
There being a motion and a second, do we have discussion?
We have Julie here, um, if we have any questions for her, but really, this is just a, uh, codification of our process for settling up, uh, utility accounts. Julie, do you have anything to add, uh?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, basically, um, as we were pivoting off of our stoppage of doing penalties and shut offs with utilities, staff has taken some time to look at our shut off process, process to make sure our notices are proper. As part of that process, we went to the village attorney and we had him update our code. Some of the changes that you're gonna see on it is, um, we can, we no longer will hold a subsequent owner, uh, responsible for fees from a previous owner. Um, we, there's a, uh, change in the timing. It used to be fifty days. Now we can shut off at forty days. We've given the residents a chance to dispute their balance. Um, we're gonna notify that as part of the shut off process. And we've put in some additional requirements for posting at the property. If in fact, there's more than three units at a property, um, we may actually look at that to do more than just if there's three units, but at this stage of the game, that's probably where we'll start.
Anyone have any question, Julie? Seeing none?
I didn't hear you. What'd you say?
I see, I see no questions.
Okay, please call the roll.
Trustee Carmona?
Yes.
Trustee Frye?
Yes.
Trustee Lomax?
Yes.
Trustee Panacola?
Yes.
Trustee Perez?
Yes.
That's five.
Motion carries and the ordinance is passed. Under the police department is the ordinance of the village of Benserville, DuPage, and Cook County, Illinois approving the fourth amendment to an agreement with Redspeed Illinois LLC for traffic law enforcement system. Is there a motion to approve the ordinance?
You have a motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
There being a motion and a second, any discussion?
So this is just an extension of the existing agreement with Redspeed for the two cameras in town, two locations in town. Um, this was negotiated by our attorneys, and, uh, no changes other than a few defeasement of fees for the village, in favor of the village.
Any questions from the board? Please call the roll.
Trustee Carmona? Trustee Carmona?
Trustee Carmona, you're muted?
Yes.
There you go.
Trustee Frye?
Yes.
Trustee Lomax?
Yes.
Trustee Panacola?
Yes.
Trustee Perez?
Yes.
That's five.
Motion carries and the ordinance is passed. Number two is a resolution to extend the intergovernmental agreement with the village of Addison for police dispatch services until April thirtieth, twenty twenty-three. Is there a motion to approve the resolution?
You have a motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
More, uh, being a motion and a second, any discussion?
Chief, do you wanna speak to this one? Go to the podium. Uh, Chief Schultz is gonna take the podium to discuss this item.
We're currently using them now, and they've been doing a satisfactory job. The intergovernmental agreement that we had with them is one that has expired in April of this year, so they propose an extension. We're proposing.
And I think it's frozen, Evan. I can't hear a word he's saying.
Pause and let it catch up a second. I look like I was possessed or something. All right, looks like everyone, Corey, you back with us? Okay, good. All right, let's, uh, pick up where we left off of ACDC does the dispatch and the proposed fees.
The agreement between the village of Benserville and the village of Addison that provide dispatch services for the police department. They currently provide them now, and they're doing a satisfactory job. The intergovernmental agreement that we currently have expired in April of this year, so they propose and we're proposing a new extension through twenty twenty-three. There's some modest increases, uh, that appear typical, and they tell us that they believe they can do it more efficiently in the future. The next contract might be well. So that's our proposal to extend the intergovernmental agreement for dispatch services.
Thank you, Chief.
Any questions from the board? Thanks, Chief. Can you call the roll, Corey?
Trustee Carmona?
Yes.
Trustee Frye?
Yes.
Trustee Lomax?
Yes.
Trustee Panacola?
Yes.
Perez?
Yes.
That's five.
Motion carries and the resolution is approved. Under public works is a resolution authorizing a notice of intent to award an eventual award of a construction contract to the White Pines Water Main Rehabilitation Project to John Neary Construction Company Incorporated in the amount of five million, seven hundred eighty-five thousand, nine hundred eighty-five dollars, twenty-five cents, contingent on the approval of a loan through Illinois Environmental Protection Agency, I E P A, and Public Water Supply Loan Program, P W S L P. Is there a motion to approve this resolution?
There's a motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
There being a motion and a second, is there any discussion?
Mr. Karachi?
Uh, thank you very much. Uh, these two items that are under public works tonight both relate to the White Pines Replacement Project. Um, the scope of the White Pines Replacement Project is gonna include over fifteen thousand linear feet of new eight-inch water mains within the village right, or within the right-of-way, or actually township right-of-way. Um, installation of over forty new mainline water valves, installation of fifty-two new fire hydrants, installation of two hundred and twenty-six new public water service lines. We'll also be rerouting private water service lines that currently go to rear yard mains to the new mains in the right-of-way. Replacement of any lead service lines that we find in the subdivision, pavement restoration, and other required tasks that, that will be needed to complete the project. The project will be funded through two loans administered through the Illinois Environmental Protection Agency. The main loan will be in, will be in, the main loan will be included in the Public Water Supply Loan Program. And will cover all the design engineering, construction engineering, and construction costs except those related to lead service line replacement. This is a twenty-year loan that comes with a one point zero one percent interest rate and includes four hundred thousand dollars of principal forgiveness. The secondary loan will be included in the lead service line replacement loan program administered through the I E P A. And will cover all the construction engineering and construction costs associated with lead service line replacements. This loan comes with a one hundred percent principal forgiveness up to a maximum amount of nine hundred and sixty-three thousand, two hundred and fifty dollars. The EPA is currently completing their review and development of the loan agreements. We do expect and hope to have a signed agreement with them, uh, within the next two weeks. Uh, the first item in front of you is actually for the construction. So the village advertised for construction bids on June eleventh, twenty twenty. Bids were received, opened, and read aloud at a bid opening on July thirtieth. Eleven contractors submitted bids for the project. John Neary Construction Company submitted the lowest responsible bid in the amount of five million, seven hundred eighty-five thousand, nine hundred eighty-five dollars and twenty-five cents. Bids ranged from just under five point eight million to just over nine point four million. Engineer's estimate for the project was just under seven point five million dollars. John Neary Construction has successfully performed many projects for the village over the years, and we do recommend a word to them. The staff does recommend approval of this resolution before you, before you, which actually authorizes the execution of a notice of intent to award a contract with John Neary Construction contingent on the approval and receipt of an I E P A loan.
So do you have an idea on timeline for, uh, breaking ground? I know this will be a two-year project at least.
Yep, so if we, uh, we can't spend any money until we get that loan. Once we get the loan, the contractor has indicated he has multiple crews ready to go. Um, we are hoping that we can break ground sometime end of September to early October.
Thank you.
Does the board have any questions from the board?
Your honor? You have something?
No, I'm good. I'm asking if anybody has any other questions from the board? Call the roll.
Trustee Carmona?
Yes.
Trustee Frye?
Yes.
Trustee Lomax?
Yes.
Trustee Panacola?
Yes.
Trustee Perez?
Yes.
That's five.
The motion carries and the resolution is approved. Number two is a resolution authorizing execution of an engineering service agreement with Civil Tech Engineering Incorporated for the White Pines Water Main Rehabilitation Project in the not-to-exceed amount of six hundred seventy-two thousand, six hundred eighty-seven dollars, contingent on the approval of a loan through the Illinois Environmental Protection Agency, I E P A, and the Public Water Supply Loan Program, P W S L P. Is there a motion to approve the resolution?
You have a motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
There being a motion and a second, is there any discussion?
Joey, as you saw on the live stream, you have some interested parties regarding this item. Can you clarify what a construction engineering contract does?
Sure, so the construction engineering is actually the engineering firm that is out onsite, uh, evaluating and watching the contractor to make sure that they are actually performing and constructing the project as it's stated in the plans and the specifications. This is different than design engineering that put the plans and specifications together. These are actually the engineers out in the field watching over the contract.
And we do this for all water main projects?
We do this for just about every project, uh, main project, capital improvement project we do in the village.
Okay, uh, do you wanna go through the, uh, how we selected this better?
Sure, so the village conducted a qualification-based selection process in selecting the firm to oversee the construction of this project. Uh, we advertised for a statement of interest for construction engineering services on July ninth. Fifteen firms submitted statement of qualifications on, uh, or by the July thirtieth deadline. All fifteen firms were evaluated based on their SOQs by a panel that consisted of three internal staff members and two outside governmental professionals. After the evaluation, Civil Tech Engineering of Itasca was determined to be the most qualified firm. Civil Tech was asked to provide a cost proposal that included onsite inspection, review of the project layout, documentation of daily quantities, preparing pay estimates, coordination of stakeholders, and material testing. After negotiations, the fee for the construction engine, engineering services was agreed upon at six hundred seventy-two thousand, six hundred eighty-seven dollars. This fee equates to nine percent of the engineer's estimate and eleven point six percent of the low bid cost. Typical loan, um, projects like this range anywhere between the ten and fifteen percent range, so they did fall within our typical range. The staff does recommend approval of the engineering services agreement with Civil Tech, again contingent on the approval of the I E P A loans.
Thank you.
Any questions from the board? Please call the roll.
Trustee Carmona?
Yes.
Trustee Frye?
Yes.
Trustee Lomax?
Yes.
Trustee Panacola?
Yes.
Trustee Perez?
Yes.
That's five.
The motion carries and the resolution is approved. Number, uh, going on to recreation, a resolution authorizing the execution of a facility rental use agreement between the village of Benserville and the Hinsdale Swim Club. Is there a motion to approve the resolution?
Have a motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
There being a motion and a second, is there any discussion?
This is actually kind of an exciting one, but promising. Um, as you guys can imagine, we've been losing significant revenue in our recreation department from our paid services, hockey, swimming, that, and, uh, baseball and softball. So, uh, we were one of the first large facilities to receive health department approval to reopen both our ice arenas as well as our pool. Um, some aquatic centers have not reopened, so we're viewing the opportunity to try to draw up new business. So we have successfully negotiated an agreement with the Hinsdale Swim Club to temporarily relocate to, uh, the water's edge. And it's a contract that should generate about thirty-seven thousand dollars for us, some additional revenue. So I gotta hand it to, uh, Todd and his team for drumming up the business, and we're gonna continue to try to do this while we can.
Any questions from the board? Please call the roll.
Trustee Carmona?
Yes.
Trustee Frye?
Yes.
Trustee Lomax?
Yes.
Trustee Panacola?
Yes.
Trustee Perez?
Yes.
That's five.
Motion carries and the resolution is approved. Uh, we're gonna move on to presidential remarks. At this time, I would like to take a moment on behalf of the village to express our deepest sympathy to trustee Anne Franz in the recent passing of her mother. Uh, Anne, the whole entire village is with you, and we pray for you every day. Also, please remember to complete your twenty twenty census. Just a reminder, the census workers will be in neighborhoods visiting homes that have not completed their forms. They will be identified as census workers. They will be wearing a mask and will never enter your home. As we are still seeing new COVID nineteen cases in Benserville, please remember to follow the guidelines from the centers for disease control. I ask residents to practice social distancing by staying six, six feet away from others and to wear a mask that covers your nose and your mouth. The V N A is continuing mobile testing on Tuesdays and Thursdays in the St. Alexis Church parking lot. Testing is by appointment only, so please see our website for more information. Couple of friendly reminders on upcoming events. September branch pickup begins on Tuesday, September eighth. September tenth through the thirteenth, through the thirteenth is the Benserville Community Yard Sale. Please see the website for permits and specific information regarding this event. That concludes presidential remarks. Do we have anything under the village managers' reports?
Yeah, I just wanna, uh, give a little bit of appreciation to, uh, the setup we have here tonight. We understand that it's not perfect, uh, but we're trying to make it as innovative as possible. I know my multimedia team, uh, Anthony is over here. He's spent a lot of time putting this Rube Goldberg system together. Uh, we're gonna continue to improve this to try to make interaction between the public and the board possible and efficient as well as safe. So, uh, thanks to the multimedia team, thanks, thanks to, uh, the staff, the board, and most importantly, the public. That concludes my report.
Do we have a village attorney's report?
I have no report, Mr. President.
Is there any unfinished business to come before the board tonight? Is there any new business to come before the board tonight? Is there a need for executive session? Is there a motion to adjourn the meeting?
You have a motion.
Do I have a second on the motion?
Second.
Uh, please call the roll.
Trustee Carmona?
Yes.
Trustee Frye?
Yes.
Trustee Lomax?
Yes.
Trustee Panacola?
Yes.
Trustee Perez? Trustee Perez?
I'm not on cut deep.
Yes.
The motion carries and we are adjourned. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen.